And there was no, you were on gravel.
Oh, yours is.
Oh, yours isn't, see? Mine's hyperlink.
Why can't I see?
Is yours hyperlink?
Okay, we are live.
Ready to go?
Yes, we're live.
Okay. We, uh, we are gonna start the meeting now and, uh, first thing to do is we're gonna say please leave it. Next, we'll have, uh, roll call here. I'm Mike and I'm here.
Tony Dunson.
Tom Schaefer, present.
Darren Holder, present.
Marilyn McCullough, present.
Mike Myers, present.
Matt, mayor, that's remote.
Okay. Thank you. All right, uh, first thing on the agenda is our meeting minutes, the June eighth meeting. Everybody had a chance to go through and review a little bit and see if there's anything that they remembered differently than what we have, uh, presented to us. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Got a motion by Tony to approve. We have second?
Second.
Tom Schaefer, second. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Minutes are approved. Next up is our CF one abatement. I think we've got a couple. Two of them. The Bush properties. Both of them? Nope, one of them.
They're sold, the Bush property sold and, um, the new management company was notified and they've sent the documentation.
Have y'all had a chance to review those? Those, those properties, um, from time to time, you know, all those spec buildings, they never know, you know, when they're gonna have a person in and out of them and it's kinda hard to, for them to predict a lot of things, but I do know that they've been very successful and they're needed in the area.
I don't watch it, I may actually know what I'm doing here on this thing in a minute.
Well, we don't have Matt here to guide us on these things, so. We get, uh, a novice like me and it can be challenging very often.
On the Bush commercial properties, there's really only one year left. Is that correct? Yeah, I think the other one, there was several years left. They'd only been into, what, three years or something of that nature?
I think it goes to year twenty-eight or twenty-nine, Darren. I think.
Yeah, we're only, we're only three years into this one.
Yeah.
Into the Melrose.
Darren, that's what the schedule shows.
That's what I'm looking at.
Looks like we granted it in twenties.
Nineteen pay twenty, looks like the first year that it was on the tax roll, uh, as far as abatement process.
Twenty pay, I mean nineteen payable and twenty?
Um, yes, nineteen pay twenty.
It's like you said, you know, who's gonna be in there and who's not.
I mean, it, it's, uh, it's, you know, it's, it's like planting corn in the spring, we don't know if we're gonna harvest anything at the end of the year and and these guys, when they put the spec buildings up, it's kinda that way too for them, so. I would, uh, entertain the idea of accepting or not accepting our CF ones that we have presented today. One or both?
Both.
Okay. Okay, motion by Mike Myers to accept both, seconded by Marilyn McCullough. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carry. CF ones approved. Next step, we have the emergency preparedness contract, Health Department.
Good morning, councilors. Um, I, I made a request for an appropriation of a different grant. I went before the commissioners yesterday for the contract. Is that, um, included in your packet or, or is it the emergency preparedness contract? Okay. Understood, okay. So annually, um, the federal government through the state of Indiana awards emergency preparedness money for the Health Department and that is in a contract form. Those metrics, um, are given in an annual review by the State Department of Health and it is one hundred percent funded, um, through an independent contract through a grant. The commissioners approved that yesterday. I've been in that role for approximately four years and, um, I wish to continue and it will be, like I mentioned, completely grant funded. Grant had supplied that contract and I'd signed it and Commissioner Taylor had signed it and we're waiting on the grant funds, the state's behind on their, um, fiscal or their processing through legal. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Do you expect any hiccups in not getting it?
No, we, we've always gotten it, um, this year, I, I assume it will be two to three months late. However, I will still be retained and I will still be able to be compensated for the time through other grants and, and the county has been very aware of that throughout the years and we, we do sometimes go in the red in that particular grant fund, um, but it is reimbursed.
I, I just got, I mean, and it has absolutely nothing to do with Kelly and services, I don't really know, but in reading through this contract yesterday, it is so ambiguous. I mean, I, I, I looked at trying to find the scope of work, a description of what the work's supposed to be. It just says certain services. It is so ambiguous, I mean, I, I'm not saying we'd have issues down the road if there was ever a contract dispute, but if it comes back to the contract and it's like, there's nothing in the contract.
There is, and that was a confusion yesterday with Commissioner Arnold, there is actually an attachment. And the language in, on the face of the contract, I don't have my commissioner folder, I apologize. It is for emergency preparedness and there was an attachment of a three-page document of various specific services that have to be met. Unfortunately, I, I hear now that you all didn't receive that either, so, um, I can go, I'll go make copies and bring it back.
But is, but is, does it spell out then?
It's very specific.
What the duties are, what scope of work is, all, because it's?
All the way down to number of meetings to attend, uh, plans to write, clinics to manage, emergency preparedness items that are according to the State Department of Health, it's very spelled out.
Okay, cuz as I say, cuz the basic contract, there's
It, it is.
There's nothing there.
And I apologize again, I thought, I thought I'd submitted, I thought it was all submitted.
Okay.
And council, for clarity's sake, the contracts, uh, go towards, or go to the commissioners as the uh, executive body for, all contracts are signed through the commissioners, but it was put on for council just because of the financial aspect, so that you would have that information. That's been a goal of ours is for you to be informed alongside all of the financial needs, so you're really not reviewing the contract or even taking a motion today to approve the contract, that's already been done through the commissioners.
Okay, but, but from a financial standpoint too, no money.
Well, we can get that attachment, Kelly can get it to the auditor's office and then we can forward it to you just for a knowledge base so that you know what that is, but.
It's one hundred percent grant funded?
It is.
Okay.
It, yes, it is, and, and on the description of the duties also includes the, the CFDA number and the federal award that it's associated with, so I will, um, I will forward that to you all for your knowledge, I'll, I'll do that today.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Matt?
No, I request, I requested that to be a part of this for informational purposes. I understood that we didn't have a decision in this, but I wanted to make sure it was available to all of us. Uh, so everybody knew about what was going on here.
And that's, and that's, and that's great and I appreciate that, I get, the, the point being too is from a legal standpoint, down the road, if there are contract issues, contract things that pop up, you go back to the contract, where's the, where's the meat, where's the detail and?
Correct.
Okay.
Anything else?
Alright, thanks. Next up is Community Corrections. Diana? Good morning. Take one, pass it down. Okay. Same on this one too.
Good morning.
Morning.
Diana Snyder with Community Corrections. Number one, I, I understand that there was a question when Laura was here last month, Tom, about some things of the way our grants work and I-
Not necessarily about the grants, um, about our, um-
Appropriations and?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, so I wanna thank Marilyn for coming in and spending a good hour and a half with me and then sharing the notes with all of you, I greatly appreciate her time and any of you are welcome to come down and sit like Marilyn and I did and I think she got a better understanding of how things work and the things that we're trying to do for our community with all these different types of grant things that we've got going on, so. What I, what I just presented to you guys to look at was I think what you were questioning at the last thing was, we do, not only do I have to submit a budget to the DOC with exact dollar amounts, then I also have to, you know, get, should be appropriated, I come to you guys with my budget so you can appropriate the line items appropriately. So, um, I try my best to match up what the funds are that I've asked the state and Misty and I worked really hard this year already making sure what I submitted to you was what was, what I, I've already submitted for a grant that was due in May, not even knowing what the budget requirements were for this twenty twenty-three, so. They're still not on the same cycle with you guys yet, so things kinda go back and forth a little bit, so we're on the grant calendar, uh, the budget year calendar with you all now, but we're still on, in a, where the grant cycle matches up with where I need to get you documents and them documents. So sometimes it's a little off. So on the front page, the first and second page, you have, I have to separate the two budgets, but when you take those two highlighted areas, uh, the total, um, was six seventeen one sixty-three, so on the front. So the highlighted portions on those two pages, um, come to six seventeen one sixty-three and the original budget I submitted, I, I realized was a little over a thousand dollars off, but you guys only approved appropriations for six oh one eight seventy-nine. But when I do my financial report, it has to match up with the fund, with this number that I gave the DOC. So there I am, working with your dollar, the amount that you all appropriated last fall and the amount that the state and my, and the board approved to be spent, if we had the money to appropriate that amount of money into those categories. So those are off. So that's why Laura came last month to ask that some additional appropriations be made because those were the original appropriations that had been approved by the state and by the advisory board. So that is why we do that.
But why do we have, why do we waste our time reviewing it if we can't make modifications to it?
Well, we never, way back in the day, Tom, we never came and, and had you guys appropriate it. Within the last few years and with Patty's due diligence of making sure things are done appropriately, we, we started having, we used to always come to you with a budget, but you guys never, you guys just said, okay, stamp of approval and it was done. But, but from, we've, what we've always come in because we were off calendar years at that time, so now that we're on a calendar year, we're trying to make sure everything coincides with what you're doing. From Patty's understanding, it needs to be appropriated by you, it is grant funds that need to be appropriated, so that's why we do that. So, and I appreciate that, that she lets us know that, but it's just, cuz it is grant dollars and it's actually that, this is project income, it is the money that we earn from our clients. So it is earned income coming in from our clients to provide services to them. So that is what that is. So, um, I've tried to really work hard matching up those two budgets, um, for this next coming year that they all match, um, but sometimes it may be, like I realize there's like a thousand dollars off, but it's trying to do your form, that form and trying to match it all up, sometimes the, might be off a few dollars and cents.
Is it based on, is, is the dollars, so it's based on the number of clients?
Yes.
So is that done in the rears or is it done actual on, or?
Well, we, we, we look at our, we look at the amount of funds the prior year that we've collected and hopefully that's the same amount of funds that we look at collecting the next year.
So it is based on the previous year?
It is based on the previous year's collections, we do look at that.
Is there any makeup on that then?
Uh, no, uh, we, well-
Well, for example, if you have a, if you have a significant increase in clients.
Then, then that money just stays in that pot for us to use for maybe coming to you to ask for additional appropriation to buy something that we need in the office, like our printer keeps acting up, so, but we're just keep tolerating it and working with it, so. That fund will, money will stay there, if and whenever Community Corrections would be gone, we hope never, but that money goes back to the state, you guys don't even get to keep it, the county does not get to keep it, including the grant funds, so. This is just income for us to provide the services to the clients that we do provide in the community so that they, um, can hopefully succeed, but that's what this is all about.
So Darren, on that, that, uh, money that they collect for those fees is done through a report of collections back through to the county level and that's what creates the cash balance.
Yep.
And then from the cash balance, you appropriate it and that gives us permission to let her spend.
Yep.
So this is Fund ninety-two hundred?
Yeah, right, now this is Fund eleven twenty-two.
Yeah, the ninety-one hundred would be the grant.
The grant. Mm-hmm. So this would be eleven twenty-two, which is the project income account and then we have the grant counts that go from ninety-one hundred in odd years to ninety-two hundred in even years. That way, we're keeping track and if there's any money left over, then the next even year, if there's a thousand dollars left in that account, they'll take a thousand dollars off the money they send us two years from now. Which just keeps the balances, that way the county's not sending money back like we used to, they just, their processes are getting better and I believe all our processes that we've been working are getting, are getting better with them, it's just, I have, you know, I get audited by them, I get audited by the state board accounts, you guys look over our budgets, so we have several checks of balances as we go through this, so.
That's why it's so important to keep, um, all of that, those revenue sources or those buckets of money separate so that you can can actually see the cash balances, you can, can audit it against the documents and so on and so forth, so. It gets cumbersome when you're trying to manage all that, but in the end, it's really the best.
Six seventeen is the total?
It's the total, that is the grant amount and that is what I, and if you look on the last pages, it's a financial report that I have to do every month. Every month I do this financial report and submit it to them, so that this is there and that's their financial report and it shows at the top where it's six seventeen one eighty-three at the top and that's the amount I have to put on there, if I put a different amount, they send me an email back and say that's not the amount that we approved. So that's why I have that amount with you guys, so that's why I'm saying, it's confusing, I have six oh, something with you and six seventeen with them and it's trying to keep, it's a little difficult, trying to keep up with the different appropriations, Tom, that's why Laura came in to talk about that, so.
And Diana presents your budgets to you, she's working on estimates, just like we are in our budget process, so then the, when she gets the real figures, then the adjustments that will need to be made. It's pretty simple, it's just a little complex.
Yes.
Simple but complex.
I know you said, but this is calendar.
That's calendar year now, correct, right, it used to be July to June, we used to be on the state calendar, but they finally moved us, thank the Lord, after thirty-some years of being on off since I've been here, to finally get to a calendar year is fantastic. It's just great for us.
Well, is that, is that showing right, Diana, and then you look at your, your budget approved is six seventeen, but you've only spent fourteen thousand four hundred dollars?
Yeah, because we spend that much at the end, most of our, that money in that account, Tom, is spent at the end of the year, we spend our grant money first.
Okay.
The bulk of it, which I'm, I have additional appropriations to come to you to move some of that grant money around today, but we try to, to pay payroll for the first four to five months with insurance and that, out of that, we actually paid the bonus and the longevity out of that this year too. So that comes out of that account and then we spend the bulk of the eleven twenty-two funds at the end of, at the last six, seven months of the year.
Okay.
Yep.
So it's just getting started?
Correct, yeah, that eleven twenty-two is just getting started, I know we have close to two hundred somewhat thousand dollars in there right now, so. But that money will go and then we're, and, um, will be including our monthly, we, we collect around fifty thousand dollars or so a month, so we bring in, so at least that, close to that amount. So does that answer your questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're right, you're welcome. And see, I also have to submit, um, paperwork to them to ask them to move money and stuff too and I'll show you that in a minute, we get to that after bed.
I'm not sure. Okay, so, uh-
Really no action?
Mm-mm, she was just-
It was just information, okay.
Anybody got other questions about, uh, any of the stuff from, uh, from Diana's office here today? Who else got questions?
Well, not until we get to the IRAX.
Yeah, we got it. Oh, oh, the, the, the extension of our lease grant, so, um, where we're currently located, um, we have to rent that land, so, for thirty-six hundred dollars a year, Marilyn and I talked about this the, when she came to the office that day, so the commissioners approved that renewal of that lease for three years, that's a three-year land lease, um, Community Corrections, Project Income, this money that we're just, we talked about, bought the two buildings that we have done there, one from the hospital and one from off-site and brought in so that we could do the programming and services that were required to do by the state. So, um, they agreed to renew that lease for another three years as we continue talks about the courthouse renovation and of that nature, so. Let's see where, where, what we fit in or don't fit in in that building, so. Cuz we do have evening hours, that's the one thing, we do have evening hours, um, like this evening, if that will be at the office till seven thirty, eight o'clock, so. But we try to accommodate our clients, cuz a lot of employers don't want them leaving their work site during job hours, during work hours and so we try to accommodate our clients so that they can continue to earn an income and wages, so.
I believe, my, the motion was made to approve for the last time with-
Yeah. But I know after listening to the, um, the, the last meeting, I think there, there were still some questions up in the air when they left, so. Yeah. So, but I guess those talks will continue as we move forward and we'll find out where, where we fit in this piece of the puzzle.
Okay, any other questions on this portion? Okay, let's move on then to the, uh, IRAX part of it.
Okay, so what you have in front of you today is the actual agreement with Mental Health America to, um, do the IRAX program, um, if you look at the front page, it, it says, um, Davis County Peer Recovery Services, which is based out of our office at this time, because Brian, Brian Peake is working on his, uh, five oh one C three so that Davis County Peer Recovery Services can become their own entity and can be a source of grant funds like this, but since he's not, I agree, he agreed to take the dollars and then I agreed to be the financial person on this end. So you can see for the portion that is the program itself, Gary has the other piece of the, with the facility dollars that he'll be receiving, there will be a total of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. And this is Vanessa Phillips, she is the director of the IRAX program at the jail, so she is overseeing the staff. She comes to us with great certifications, having worked at the, um, worked for Samaritan Center, and, um, been a social worker and, uh, masters?
Bachelor.
Bachelors and, um, have worked with clients who have, uh, mental health and substance issues for years, so we were lucky, yes.
So.
Yes.
What does IRAX stand for?
Let her, oh, she's, she's done all the training, so.
In all, in this contract, I read through it three times and I still don't know what IRAX stands for.
IRAX stands for Integrated Reentry and Correctional Support Program, so we are one of five pilot sites in the state of Indiana, this comes directly out of the governor's office as a initiative from him, Mental Health of America, Indiana is essentially the experts in behavioral health in the state, so they are a direct connection to the state level. We are, like I said, one of five counties, the other four counties are Dearborn, Blackford, uh, Scott and, um, Delaware Counties, so they've kind of targeted different population sizes, different demographic areas within the state and Davis County was picked because of the already, um, progressive work they've done with peer recovery services and, um, great community partnerships with, um, jail, community corrections, probation, courts and the hospital. So we are excited to, to have been chosen and then to also kinda come into the facility and provide positive reentry experience for those that are incarcerated, um, because we know one of the largest components of our jail population is recidivism, a lot of them re-enter the facility due to that and so what we're trying to accomplish is to decrease recidivism rates in our county to then take the burden of, of tax dollars and, you know, continuous services over and over again, so we can come at it from a peer-driven, um, case management component, uh, to help with success.
The starting and end date of this is what the what?
The grant period started June first of this year and runs through May of twenty twenty-three. Prior to this being implemented, Mental Health America of Indiana have, has already set up a sustainability plan for the programming, with a billing component and being able to bill for services, uh, within the facility. They've also already had conversations with the, the state offices about continued funding to offset burden costs if that were to be the case, but this program should be fully sustainable through bill, billable services.
But you're not here from beginning to end?
Myself? No, I will be, yes, I'm, I'm, um, the supervisor for the program, so my intention is to stay on through the grant period, once it becomes a fully funded site, um, to manage staff.
And contracts has different dates, so what?
Does it say July one or does it say June one? Does it say June one to twenty-two?
June one to May thirty-first, twenty-three?
This one says June one to eight thirty-one.
Thirty-one, oh.
Eight, eight thirty-one.
Eight.
Twenty-two.
You may be looking at, so.
It's the only one I was giving.
Sorry.
Well, my question was, hey, my question is, before we sign these agreements, everything went through, right, grant, grant oversaw all these agreements before we made it, we accepted these?
Where did you get that?
It's her contract.
I couldn't hear the question.
I didn't either.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. And I sent that.
To backtrack on this a little bit.
That's what that one says, yeah.
This came down, um, last minute.
Yes.
Uh, paperwork was signed prior to the normal prop, policies and processes that we have in place, that's what has caused some of this confusion and stir. So, um, the contracts are already signed, is my understanding and we're trying to get everyone up to speed on what the program is, what the, there was some questions over, um, whether the salaries of the people that the contract was paying was gonna be employees of the county or if they were gonna be contract and I think that was decided it was gonna be contract. So there's just a lot of things that we're trying to make sure that we document well for transparency and for future reference. So it is kinda playing catch-up, but the contracts are already signed. So it is kind of plain catch-up, but the contracts are already signed, yeah.
I under- I understand that and I'm still trying to stay out of the weeds and stay at thirty thousand feet.
And that, and I have been asking for the con- I mean, I've been asking for the contracts ahead of time and then they came to us at the end of May and, or actually the day that it started and said, here's your contract.
The only thing I requested was to look at.
I can send you the full one. I mean, I just, I just took a partial so that you could guys could see the dollars amount and.
But in reading her employment, she's done in two weeks.
So that, um.
No.
That's the sore contract.
Eight thirty-one.
Oh, is that the sore contract?
Yeah, I have to sign a new contract.
Oh, okay, that's the sore contract. So when we get, so that is, she, right now she's being paid out of a different grant that we got, uh, from, with Samaritan Center a year and a half ago. But we will do a new contract once the funding arrives for this. We don't have the money for the IRAX program yet. That's why. So, but she will do a new contract and we're working with Grant on those. We, I sent Grant all the contracts, the current contracts of the, of these, of the staff, because they're getting paid out of.
The state opioid response.
The state opioid response grant, which is the eighty-eight or ninety-nine hun- ninety-nine hundred grant. So they're getting paid out of that right now, which, uh, which is a grants, we were kind of a pass-through. Samaritan Center got it, or Good Sam got it, and then they're just giving us the money. We got eighty thousand dollars on that one. So we had money to spend. They approved us using this to get this program started since we had no money to fund the staff. So she will, Grant and I, we've been working on contracts, sent him these contracts so that he could devise some type of contract process so that we can extend their contracts moving forward.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so the contracts she's referring to are the independent contractor agreements where we're going to take a, a generic document and then we need to add something relative to IT. Matt, I think you've been looped in on some of that if, if you want to speak to that or, or Dale.
Uh, I'll let Dale talk about that if he's available.
Yeah, we have to have something in place that. Going to give, if we're going to give individuals, contractors direct access to our systems, have something in place. E, system, cyber security insurance and ask them to pay. And usernames out to people that aren't even employed by you, but gotta have something that covers all that. I brought it up because. Things pop up. At work and to an internal system. We gotta get some kind of standard in place. I guess. Cyber insurance.
So, so would that apply also to like to Kelly's contract? Your deal?
I, I check with.
I understand. You said it all gets confusing?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so in all respect to this group, when dollars and contracts and dates and none of that stuff matches, it's a little difficult to know.
And I, and I understand it. We just had no funds to pay them out of that yet because they had to submit their first report for the month of June, which she's done. So the first lump sum of money will be coming, then they will all be switched over to the IRAX fund at that point. But to get the process going, I talked with Good Sam to make sure they were okay with the way we were going to use the dollars. They needed us to spend the, what was left of our eighty thousand dollars that we had budgeted for Davis County Community Corrections. And they agreed to allow me to use that money to fund the other staff for this program until our IRAX money came forward, so.
So technically we're contact, contracted right now for the state opioid response funding, which targets the same population, has the same kind of objectives. Um, and I've submitted the June report already, which will, uh, facilitate, um, our funding for our staff, but will also facilitate the funding for the sheriff to receive his first payment for, um, us being within the facility to accommodate our needs. He will receive three payments, um, in which might, what, what you might be seeing in that contract is the, the dates for which he will receive his funding. Uh, because then when they sent us two contracts, they accidentally sent.
In all fairness, contracts, agreements, all that stuff's executive branch, so that's not us anyway. But when you look at the dates of those and the dates and dollar amounts and nothing matches, and then there's nothing coming from one finding yet there isn't. It, it is a little different, a spider web to follow.
Yes, yes.
We either need to know that, if we're going to be accountable, or, so that was my only, no, no problem or issue with that.
Okay.
It's just rather difficult to, the pieces of the puzzle aren't fitting together.
Yes, and, and we understand. We were just trying, because they had a bunch of training to start with June first and not having the funding, we had to figure out a way to fund it, so, um, so that they could get their training, so they could get the program started, so.
And I'd be more than happy to send Patty, um, it's a s- a one-page document that kind of highlights from a overarching level of what the program is in its entirety. Um, I believe the commissioners received that as well, but I think we brought them paper copies. So I can send a digital file to Patty, um, to have for you to review as well.
That was, that was my complaint here too with this contract. I read it and it's like, I have no clue. But it, and it talks about the, the scope of work, but the scope of work just basically talks about deliverables of monthly reports and meetings and things.
Yeah, and that's, and that is, and that is right now, that was all that was in the contract, was that there was deliverables. We just have to meet reporting and then their work inside the jail, they've went through training to, to do the work inside the jails, so.
But yeah, and but, but for us to read through it.
Correct.
It gives no description as to what the actual.
Program is.
Products or service or whatever it is.
Yeah, so she, she's done all the training, so she can come up with a document that lets you all know specifically what they are doing. But they're, they've assessed just about, or they're assessing every individual in the jail right now to see where they fit in with their substance and mental health issues.
Yeah.
And as they work forwards, put them into programming and services to help them with that, so when they leave. And everyone when they leave will have a cell phone.
Uh, we're working on a contract with Sprint. Um, the state is working on a contract with a cell phone provider to ensure that if someone doesn't have access to a phone, they have a phone so they can make contact with probation, community corrections or any program that they're affiliated with when, when they do reentry. Um, we have ability to help them get their social security card, birth certificate, um, ID, um, employment, connect them with a mental health or substance use provider prior to release, um, and hopefully even employment.
Yeah, when they walk out the door. And that's a lot of work that we do when a client comes to us. But the individuals who don't either go to probation or community corrections when they leave the jail have none of these abilities. So this program will help every individual who leaves the jail, not just those coming to, to additional programming or services afterwards, forward, so, yep.
Can we have some meeting updates the next couple, three months?
Yes, oh yeah, absolutely.
So that we, I mean, this is all clear as mud to all of us. And, um, it's, it's very confusing.
Yes.
It's hard to get your arms around it.
Yes, yes.
So I'd be more than happy, um, part of my role is providing, um, two monthly meetings thus far. I'm meeting with the jail management team, so that's kind of the staff within the jail, nursing, um, jail commander, those types of individuals. Kind of to be more, uh, in the weeds sort of information. And then we'll have a monthly meeting with higher-ups. We might utilize the J-RAC meeting for that, moving it to a monthly capacity to, to provide, um, updated information such as data kind of progress where we're at with individuals. But I'd be more than happy to come once a month to the council meeting to provide that same information.
I'd say, as you can tell, the more we know about something when it's presented to us.
Oh, yes.
The easier it is for us to absorb and ask questions and get through and move on. But this, this one's kind of cloudy. So, uh, yeah, if you could, we, we would certainly appreciate that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. This was just thrown on us too. They just made their decisions at the last minute, who was going to get these dollars and boom.
And I will say, so.
Well, I get.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Go ahead, Matt.
So I, I have a quick question. I mean, obviously what this program does is a good thing, right? My concern is communication was not really great on this whole thing. I mean, what I would have liked to seen or heard is when this grant program came at the beginning that we got some kind of notice of what was going on. We got everything at the back end. I know it was there, but it kind of, hey, we're getting this real quick, just making you aware. You know, that would have been nice and helpful. Now we're piecing everything together on the back end. Just came around the wrong way, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Like I said, I think the program is great and what you're going to be doing is great, but the communication wasn't that great. And hopefully going forward, we can continue and, and make that better process.
And I believe someone from the state level had reached out some, to some different individuals, but it might not, it might not have been the best initial contact to get, um, information passed through. Um, and when someone from the state's reaching out to local entities, you know, things can get lost in translation. So, um, we're, I'm really trying to do a, a good job of catch-up and be as transparent as possible. And, and, you know, I'd be more than happy to attend any meetings or you're more than welcome to sit down with me one-on-one. Um, I have a intention to bring my staff to, to meet each one of you, so you kind of have an idea of who they are and what they're doing. Each of them, um, go through an extensive credentialing process, um, where they go through training and ethical training and they have to pass a state certification. I myself have had to do the same thing. And then we receive ongoing technical assistance from the state on our programming, um, and, and oversight from them as well.
And I'll say in, in my experience. You see, state is not a huge state to come out and say, program, we want you to have it started yesterday.
Yeah, pretty much.
And that's exactly what happened here, Mike, exactly.
Remember the ready program last year, they came up with that?
They had money.
Ideas and they put them out there and they're like, start it now.
Yep.
Our con- Vanessa, you should be our contact if we got a question?
Yes.
Okay, and you'll, you can provide an email?
Yes, I will provide. Is Patty the best person to provide my contact information? Yeah.
Okay.
I'll provide that one-page document, um, and then feel free to reach back out to me after reviewing that if you have any questions, comments, concerns or further clarification.
And we'll clear the whole contract, yeah. And we'll clear the whole contract there and so you can see, but it's, that is basically the scope of work on there, but she can explain more of what they're doing in the weeds than what that contract does, so.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, the point being, if we're doing our due diligence to.
Oh, absolutely, Darren, absolutely.
And if we get this thrown in front of us.
Oh, yeah, we got it thrown in front of us too, so.
And it's like, you know, what is this and what's the, yeah, and that's.
Yeah.
Well, Matt, Matt said it best.
Yeah, he did.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, and we agree. But exactly what Mike said, they just said, here's the money and here you go.
Well, they didn't even say, here's the money. They said, here's the contract, do the work and we'll pay you.
Yeah.
Pay you later.
Yeah.
What kind of compensation goes to the jail?
Um, the jail should receive three payments totaling forty thousand dollars to, uh, compensate, um, our, our being in the facility. He has his own contract, which the commissioners have seen, um, and I don't know if Gary wants to speak to it, but I, I, um, part of that requirement is just reporting to the state, basic information that, uh, they're already gathering that information on, primarily inmate population data, demographics, those types of things, um, and that's to just to support the program. We're trying to, um, not, um, make this program costly to the jail, um, and so we're, we're trying to be as amicable and flexible as possible. And so.
There was one question I had with the jail as well, is this creating a lot of overhead for Gary and his employees? I know that they're getting a, uh, you know, a stipend, they're getting some dollars for this, but, you know, is he happy with the capacity and being able to do those reports and that sort of thing? Um, Gary, are, are you good with that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that. Uh, just so you know, I'm not spending any money until the state money gets there. Depped the state too much in my life to believe that we're actually going to get a payment on time somewhere. So, uh, and also they, they needed some space, so in the basement we took, we're taking, uh, what we took out of the squad room where we put central dispatch and I'm setting that up in the basement for them to, to work out. I think we'll be all right. I don't think we're having to run a whole bunch of extra stuff. I know my, uh, own contractors have to add to some, they'll text capability to their equipment. Have contact with them without being charged. And that's in the works, so. See how this works. Like I always say, I know what we've done for the past forty years and, uh, we seem to be making headway. Sending drug and alcohol recovery classes and we're amazed that they were back in two months. So hopefully, you know, hopefully this will work. Set us some rate down, ultimate goal. Uh, one part of it that they haven't touched on is there is a, last I knew, there was a, uh, group coming in, building, or they're going to buy a house. Folks can.
Yeah.
When they get out of jail, a lot of times they have to go back to the same environment that they came from, right? So it's a.
Sober, Oxford, sober living house. It's an Oxford house.
Oxford house, that's it.
And also Pete Aldrich has offered to purchase another home possibly for us to use as a sober living environment when these individuals are released, so that we can have more of those types of facilities in our own community. So they're not returning to the same house that they came from where their substance use issue or mental health issue may be aggravated with, so.
So, uh, you know, we'll do what we can to make it work. Uh, they've already interviewed probably half of the jail already. Remember this first started coming out, I told them, you gotta go through the right channels. Probably related to here. I don't think it was my responsibility to put it through the right channels.
Yeah.
So, uh, but that's where's that, uh, they're through half, half of them and they seem to be pleased with the results so far. So we'll see what happens a year and two year from now. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else got any other questions for them? Okay.
Thank you.
I think we'll move on. Next item, uh, the HVAC preventative maintenance service.
All right, uh, this is Mr. Bernardis from DeBrock Kimball. I probably mispronounced that. There we go. Uh, they've offered, they're the ones that we awarded the contract for to replace the HVAC system over to sheriff's office. Uh, they've come forward with a proposal to, uh, main, maintain that system. And that, and the price of it is in there. The commissioners approved it. They wanted it put into my budget, so we, they keep track of it. I'm not exactly sure that it's in the budget in September, so we're going to have to figure that out and maybe make it a line item for September, pending approval of course. But I, I think, and he'll explain exactly what they're going to do, when they're going to do it. I think if we maintain them properly, uh, we will get more life out of that, out of that HVAC system, so.
All right, morning.
Good morning.
So, um, like Gary's saying, I'm Brandon Bernard with DeBrock Kimball. We had did the big project over at the jail, replaced, um, I believe nine rooftop units over there. Um, we proposed a preventative maintenance, um, agreement, which we do with a lot of our customers. Um, you know, the, the whole point of doing the preventative maintenance is, is to make those systems run as efficiently as possible. You can always, you know, expand the lifespan of those. Um, everything has a lifespan. But if you're doing routine maintenance on that, obviously it's going to last a little bit longer. I liken it to just like your vehicle, you know, you're taking it for regular routine maintenance and oil changes. Obviously it's going to treat you better and last a little bit longer. So what we've done is we've put together, we, we did a, uh, what we'd call a site survey and, and basically went through the jail, all of the, um, systems that are related to the HVAC. Not just the ones that we replaced, but also all of the rest of the systems as well. And we've put together, they're all listed, every piece of item that's over there at the jail is listed on here under the equipment schedule. It also includes, you know, the walk-in coolers and freezers and ice machines, everything, that those items also need maintenance. I've also included pictures of everything in here as well, and the pictures will line up with what is listed, just for easier reference from everyone. If you go just past the pictures, we actually get to our task sheet, our task sheets, and that is going to be our scope of work. And it is listed by each type of system that we have outlined here, so it gives you an idea of every time that we come out for a visit, you can see what it is that our technicians are doing. It's not just a visual inspection of looking at something. You know, we're putting gauges on systems, we're checking pressures, we're going through the entire thing just to make sure that everything is running up to par and the most efficient way as possible. We're including, you know, changing out all of your air filters, so four times a year, filters are provided, it's included in the service. So there's not an extra cost on top of that. It is included, we will change them out. Same thing as far as the belts. Many item that includes belts, that is already factored into this, so there's not any type of extra charge on top of that. We will also do a condenser cleaning with this area in Cotton Woods. Everybody can see it floating around in the summer. And we were actually up here, I believe, just a few weeks ago, and we had a factory defect on one of the compressors. And we replaced, while we were up there, noticed that the condenser coolers were already dirty, full of cotton wood. We went ahead and just cleaned that as a service to you. We didn't charge you for it just because it needed to be done. But that is included in this agreement as well. The biggest, I guess the biggest part of this is all of those units that we replaced, as long as DeBrau-Kempel is doing a quarterly preventative maintenance program on there, you will get a lifetime compressor warranty on any of those units that are twenty-five tons or less that we have replaced. So as long as we are in front of it, we are the ones taking care of it, we will, for the life, forever, we will always honor that warranty on that compressor. The compressor is going to be your most expensive part of those units, so as long as we are the ones taking care of it, you know, we will go ahead and always honor that lifetime compressor warranty.
How many of those do we have?
You have nine, we replaced nine units, so I believe all but two will fall, seven of the nine will fall underneath that twenty-five tons or less. So over the lifespan, that's going to pay for itself anyways. You know, that compressor, once, if those go out, those can get rather pricey, you know, depending on the size of it, anywhere from two to three thousand dollars to five or six thousand dollars just for the compressor, and then you have the labor included to replace those. As long as we have the preventative maintenance with the jail, you know, that's all covered, labor and materials as well. So we will replace that free of charge. And then I also talk about in here, and I went over with Gary and with Mark over there, we have a program that DeBrau uses called Service Edge. And it's basically an electronic tracking system that all of our technicians use, that all that we use there in the office. So every piece of equipment that you have at the jail will be entered into our system. So basically, anytime our technician comes to your facility to work on any equipment, whether it's a preventative maintenance call or something has broken down and they call out, that is entered into that system and it's there forever, it's in the cloud, just like everything else. So it will keep history of that, so it's a good tool for to be able to say, "Hey, we can tell that this piece of equipment is nickel and diming us to death. We've had our quarterly visits, we're still having issues with it." It just gives a good detailed history. We can also set it up where Gary or anyone else can have access. We can set you up on a customer portal so he can always log in and be able to look at all of his HVAC systems and see every time that we've been out, done a visit. It's a very detailed notes from the technicians on every single item that they have done on that system for that day. So it's just a nice tool that we use. It's also very informative for our customers as well, especially when you have to replace an expensive item and you have to go before, you know, commissioners or council to get approved. It gives that detailed history of why the item needs to be replaced, so it's a very nice tool.
For a budgeting standpoint, would it also project out or replace potential replacement time?
Yes, so on every one of our task sheets, it will, at the end, it will always make recommendations for repairs. If you go past the page that has the Service Edge where it says samples, we do an annual account review where it says samples. It will also talks about life expectancy on those systems. And it will give you, every time, you know, on there, it'll show you what the life expectancy of that system is. You know, if it was replaced in 2022, you know, you can typically get fifteen to twenty-five years out of that system. As time goes on, it will let you know, "Hey, this is in this shape. I would expect to replace, you know, in the next three to four years or, you know, one to two years." So it'll give you a good idea of, for budgeting reasons, you know, "Hey, you know, in the next few years, we need to start thinking about replacing some of those units." And then as far as, you know, costs, like I said, commissioners have, they've already taken a look of it as well, but for the full year, you know, you're looking at nineteen thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars a year. That is for the four quarterly visits. And that's taking care of everything, like I said, belts included, filters. So there's not going to be any additional charges on top of that as far as preventative maintenance. Now in that, you know, while we're doing those checks, we are going to find things that are going to need to be replaced or be broke, but are broken need to be fixed. We will always, we won't just fix it and send you a bill. We will always make recommendations, communicate that with you. If you need a quote, we will always, you know, give you a quote as far as before we fix anything. But, yeah, this just included the preventative maintenance, you're looking just a little under twenty thousand per year. What we talked about at the commissioners' meeting, this is not a hard contract, it's just a service agreement. There's not any penalty or a set date that you have to go through. Anytime that you, if the county is not happy with our service, and hopefully that never comes forward. But there's a thirty-day out. You just give us a thirty-day notice, you're free and clear, there's no penalty. So we recommended, especially over with the course of the last couple of years with COVID and everything and the way prices have skyrocketed and everything, we recommended the multi-year, the three-year option. It locks you in at this price for the first two years. Year three, it will go up to a five percent increase. The reason that we recommend that now is because essentially you can lock in this price and you can get out at any time, thirty-day notice. And that way you don't have to worry about next year if it goes out to be quoted again and the cost of filters have jumped thirty percent or anything else, which has happened over the course of the last eighteen months, you know you're locked in at this rate. So that was the recommendation that we made, just simply for the fact it's not a hard contract, there is no penalty for...
And this was approved by the commissioners and signed already?
Yes, yes.
All right, so this is just the funding portion of it. We got to approve that, correct?
Right.
Okay, all right.
So, from commissioners', do we, is this the only building at the jail that we're doing this? Is there any consideration for doing it for this building, courthouse, any other? And we would be interested in obviously taking care of the other buildings as well while we are here in town. I was, I'm born and raised in Washington, my, all my family still lives up here, so I would love to spend more time up here as well.
Okay, any other questions?
Okay, so we're looking for a motion for the almost twenty grand? Okay, I mean, commissioners have signed it. I think it's cheap. You're going to, you're either going to repair, rebuild, or replace when you see something.
We were spending forty to forty-five, maintaining what we had.
Yeah.
With Buchanan's.
No brainer here, so I'll make the motion. We just need to figure out what budget.
So I didn't know, Gary, do you have a...
It's in Gary's budget, right?
Right, it'll be in the security center budget. I'll probably make it a line item. And we talked about that this morning, if he's going to have to change that in the upcoming budget, to make it a line item so we know where it's at. The commissioners would prefer it to be in my budget so they know where it's at and what it's for.
Well, it's helpful in tracking, so you'll need to get with Misty on if there's a change in your budget for this next year's process because we're putting that information in now. And then that contract, I think, was effective.
Until he had that line item, he doesn't need a motion.
So if the contract was effective July first, we'll have to read the terms of when the payments due, but do you have money in your budget line currently or will you need additional appropriation?
I think that's later. I think that's later today.
Yeah, I wondered if that wasn't coming up.
Is that the fifteen thousand?
I think so.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, the next item we have is the Land Bank Initiative SIDC. Do we have anybody here who presents?
So Greg Jones presented that to the commissioner prior. I'm not sure if there was a communication lapse perhaps on our end or his end on if he was going to present that same information to the council or not, but we can follow up with him and then if need be, we can put it back on your next one.
Okay.
So informational purposes, huh?
Yeah, everybody clear? Davis County Hospital Board Appointment.
Thanks.
Pardon me?
I think we have the mileage rate on there to look at, Mike.
Hang on. County mileage rate. So are we looking, I guess we're looking to update the rates or...
State has increased it. We've talked about this, I think, a meeting or two ago, but the state has officially changed their mileage reimbursement rate. And generally, historically, the council has followed that, so that's why it's back before you. We did give you some information, I think, on the IRS rate is like sixty-two cents. The state rate is, that's in your documents. They do theirs a little differently, depending on, they have a schedule there for the fuel cost and then they have that on the side there, but...
It says down at the bottom.
So currently, we just, we have a rate for the given year.
Right.
Where it appears the state has obviously got a rolling rate depending upon the price, average price of gas.
Forty-two cents a mile is what we're at currently, and then the state has increased that and the federal IRS reimbursement rate has increased.
Fuel's coming down.
It is coming down, but I said that same thing last time.
You're the guy.
Yeah, I am.
I don't know, what do you want to do? I don't mind a bump it three or four cents or something like that, but it's kind of a moving target right now to sit here and say, bingo, this is the one we're going to go with.
I, last year, but...
Today's rates would be forty-seven cents.
So next month, if it drops fifty cents a gallon, are we going to change it again?
I'll just pick something and be done.
That's where I was headed.
We aren't talking about raising it now through the end, raise it at budget time for the next year.
Right.
I'm fine with that.
What's your number?
I heard somebody say forty-seven. We're at forty-two right now. No, the federal already went to six. They bumped the...
They make more money than we do.
Seven cents a mile, five cents?
Is that your recommendation?
That's a thought. Okay, I have a recommendation for me. Go higher or we'll...
That's in the price range of four sixty-two to four eighty-seven, according to this chart.
In theory, that's where the state would be right now.
We follow the state.
Open for suggestion here.
So they're what, forty-nine cents?
Yeah, that, yeah, so that's a month old. And so they probably have already adjusted, yeah, adjusted down based on the current...
Split the difference and go forty-eight. I'll make a motion, split the difference, forty-seven, argue forty-nine, forty-eight cents till the end of the year unless something drastic happens, we'll revisit it, but most likely we won't. That's my motion.
Make that effective as of July one, or you want to go on or...
July one.
I'll go with that.
Got a second?
That's a motion. I got a second.
Okay, motion by Tony to move our rate to forty-eight cents, seconded by Mike Myers. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, motion carries. Now, Davis County Hospital Board Appointment. We've got recommendations for the board seats. And we are appointing three.
How that works on three-year terms whenever they come up, these people were not in a room, but the other board members wanted to go ahead and renominate these three, and that's what was done. So this is the three that was asked to continue.
We have, our three nominees are Shelley Dean, Charisse Lahano, and Kent Norris. What would council like to do here? Pardon me?
Is Fresh Lahano a physician?
Yes, Tony.
I work for the hospital. Doctor who worked for the hospital, we appointed that person. So a hospital employee. I'm assuming Dr. Lahano is not a employee of the hospital.
Say what? He's been on there for years. As well as two other physicians.
Was a hospital.
And he's pretty knowledgeable on stuff.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion by Marilyn to approve these three nominees. Tom Schaefer second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed and abstained, Tony Dungeon. Tony's on that board, so it does carry. Okay. And then we're...
Matt's last meeting was twenty minutes, I'm just saying. Matt's last meeting was twenty minutes, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I'm sitting here, I'm sitting here thinking, you guys aren't ever gonna want me to come back in this seat again. Sorry about that. Uh, okay. Okay, the next item. Is this pay, pay go?
And Rosanna is not able to be here, so, um, I don't know if you wanna table that one and then have her?
Info, wouldn't it?
Yeah. And, uh, next up is Wes Boggs. Sorry, it took so long to get to all of you.
Hi, it's been a while, can't get rid of me though, can you?
Does that mean you're staying?
No, but I'm trying hard to get my replacement, that's one of the reasons we are here. Um, unfortunately, that wouldn't be on the table, so, thanks for getting us on the agenda, I certainly appreciate it. Uh, we did bring a bit of a Wes Boggs entourage, we have some of our full-time staff here with us, and a full of our park board members who wanted to come in and kinda support the efforts, what we're trying to do. So, yeah, um, thanks for the past, you know, six years I've been here, it feels like about sixty, but I think it's only been six, um, but we've come a very, very long way at Wes Boggs. And I came on in two thousand and fifteen as the assistant, took over in two thousand and sixteen, we hit the ground running, came in a very good opportunist, opportunistic, opportunistic time with the lake renovation, we, we capitalized on that, did a lot of good, inventory, staff assessments, master plan, public input sections, um, and kinda gave our communities really what they needed. Uh, we did a lot of sta, or, uh, staff restructuring. And I really feel like we've taken that park a very, very long way. We've, uh, doubled the revenue in about six years, which is phenomenal. Um, we have made that place a very, I guess, a target for tourism, for both Davies and Martin County, um, and we're able to really reconnect with a lot of our constituents, a lot of our community members, and, and broaden our horizons for a good fifty, sixty-mile radius, substantially. I know a lot of you sitting on the council come out to the park and, and frequent the, the, the park often, so you can kind of validate the participation rate that's really increased out there. And I really feel like, um, the park's gonna go a lot further here in the next, next handful of years. We've got a really good foundation going on, we have a great support, we have a great park board, and we have a great staff that we've hired on, um, and that's part of the kind of the restructuring that we're gonna continue with, um, and what I'd like to talk a little bit about today. So obviously, we've had a bit of a, a hard time trying to find a replacement for my position. Um, I think there's a lot of variables with that, obviously the economy the way that it is, um, certainly hurts the inflation rate, and then, you know, if you look at, you know, trying to relocate to a, an unknown area, um, can be kind of intimidating for some folks, there's a lot of people that have dual incomes, so one person will have to quit their, their occupation, relocate to Lagode, and trying to find employment in this vicinity, which can be a, a, a hard task at certain times, especially in rural America. So one of the things we wanted to look at the idea of doing is trying to increase our salary rates, um, and as for across the board, not just my, my position or the position that I've left, um, but for all of our full-time staff, mainly because they are vastly underpaid for what they're worth. Though one of the caveats to, to COVID was the fact, you know, obviously it was detrimental to the world, but everyone reconnected with their parks, uh, which was phenomenal for parks and recreation, especially for campgrounds. But what came along with that is the increased participations, the increased maintenance, uh, the increased need for our services, um, for, for very lucrative and very well-educated professionals to serve those roles, that we can provide those services to our communities into capacity that they deserve, um, everyone that, you know, resides in these counties certainly deserve, you know, to have a phenomenal parks department, um, and especially a phenomenal facility like Wes Boggs Park. The potential's still there, uh, there's a long way to go with Wes Boggs Park, we have a lot of great plans, a lot of ideas and initiatives, and a lot of that culminates in our current master plan that we reviewed and went over in the past, you know, three years, actually through two thousand and twenty, through the COVID year, actually rewrote that plan. So, I really feel like the best investment at this current time is investing more into our staff and to more our department. So what we're looking at's a bit of an increase in the salary for one, like I said, to attract my position, the superintendent's role, so we can maybe attract some people from wide and further on, uh, but also retain the current staff that we have. Um, a couple of our staff do drive down from, one from Salisbury, one from Bloomfield, easy to do whenever they said yes to the occupation, yeah, at about two fifty a gallon or less, but whenever gas has jumped up, plus the inflation rate the way that it is, makes it hard for them to actually retain this, this position, um, especially with that, with the wages that they're being paid. Uh, April twenty-first, I sent out an email to everybody with our current figures and also with some of the salary surveys that I looked through, there was a salary survey conducted by the Indiana Parks and Recreation Association, and there was an also a, a couple of surveys I emailed out to the National Parks and Recreation Association, and you can review those and see that we're substantially under, kind of under the average. Uh, there was an example I put in there also, as I was, you know, looking at other comparable job openings around the country and, and, and that was suitable, or I guess comparable to the position we have open, I found one right down the road in New Albany, Indiana, for the assistant superintendent, that started off at sixty-five thousand, and their budget was about four to five hundred thousand dollars less than ours. Uh, what their director makes, I don't know, I didn't look that deep into it, but if the assistant starts off at sixty-five, I'm assuming the director's fly closer to eighty-five to ninety. Um, and I do know, you know, around, the, around the country, roughly, the superintendent's positions are around the average of about a hundred thousand. Now, obviously, that takes into account your large municipalities that have a very high multimillion dollar budget, we're not there, um, but at the same time, I don't really feel like, and, and one of the reasons I'm leaving, obviously, is that the, the salary doesn't reflect the, the, the tasks at hand. Um, the superintendent's job, along with everybody else, especially in the heat of the summer, is about a twenty-four-seven job, um, even on your days off, you're, you're called, you're emailed, you have a lot of great seasonal staff that we, we lead through, um, a lot of these, uh, these programs and services, but they obviously don't have the skill set to do a lot of those things on their own, so they do have to have a lot of guidance, continual guidance. The winter time is nice, you only work about fifty hours a week, maybe sixty, uh, but in the summertime, you're back up to seventy-five to eighty hours a week, almost minimum, um, with very minimal time into yourself, so having to be able to find those barriers has been very difficult for myself and my family. But it also, once again, I think the pay needs to reflect what the, that output really is, and after the past couple of years with COVID, and then the impact we're seeing with that, which is wonderful, don't get me wrong, I think, uh, we need to really revisit our, our restructuring of salaries. So, when I first came on, yeah, our budget was just under, actually, yeah, just under a million dollars, as was our revenue, so, you know, we are a, a self-sufficient department, we haven't taken tax money since ninety-six, so we do, we are able to do our revenue projections, we have a ten-person board, um, and, and those individuals are capable of going through the, those, that revenue projection and our, and our, and our current revenue, and our expense projections, and making these recommendations as well. Um, I feel we've had these discussions now for several months, and everyone feels very comfortable with the recommended, uh, salary amounts we'd like to present, um, knowing that at any time, you know, just like any other business or pri, or for-profit business, that if, if anything ever were to take a turn and spiral down a little bit, we can always cut costs in certain ways. But at the same time, I certainly feel that if, if we take this initiative and we invest into our, our staff and our structure, we're gonna provide those services much better for our, 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 our constituents, our users, but also be able to really find detail our expenses throughout our department, being able to really focus on where our expenses lie, where our priorities lie, and probably cut costs overall, just with the more streamlined facility in the department. Um, so I think that alone will be able to speak for, um, the, the, the slight increase in our salary. So, I don't know if you guys have those figures in front of you, and I apologize for not bringing the copies of these, I just realized we, I should have raw copies, um, but I can easily pass this along if you'd like to see it. Um, but what we're trying to propose, and we would like to have, if, if possible, you know, this happen, you know, immediately, if not, we can, we can have that, that easy discussion. Okay, cool. Phil's been a great assistant. But what we'd like to do is try to jump up the superintendent's position from the current start rate of about, I think it's, and I don't have the current rate, actually I do, it's fifty-two, five-nine-four, to sixty-five thousand, and it doesn't have to be exactly sixty-five, it's up to sixty-five. Uh, we would like to have the, it'd be the program director up to forty-five thousand, the office manager to forty-nine, the customer service manager at forty-five, the maintenance manager at forty-nine, and then the maintenance assistant manager at forty-three-five. Now, those are our five, or sorry, our six full-time staff members that we have on staff right now. One thing we are also looking at doing next year is adding on a couple of more full-time staff, just because it's definitely warranted, uh, but that can be a discussion for later on, obviously closer to budget hearing time, and, and we can certainly rationale why we need those positions. Uh, but that's, that's what we are recommending right now, just so that we can get our staff paid adequately and what they deserve compared to what their, their output is, and, and hope that we can continue, you know, progressing with Wes Boggs Park, um, in, in the, in obviously the positive light that it has been. So I can go on for a long time about Wes Boggs, but I won't.
We have a benefit package also.
Yes, we do, we keep everything streamlined with Davies County. Uh, the only thing we do differently than, than I believe the rest of the county, um, employees is we do not offer the per, we do a longevity check for the, uh, retirement program. Um, so the, the page you'll see there, the, the top column will have the proposed increases with a three and a half, and that's, we did the three and a half increase based on what you guys recommended for the, uh, the budget proposals for two thousand and twenty-three. Um, so you can kinda see that across the board, and at the very bottom, the bottom graph, you see our current salary rates and what the three and a percent would look like through two thousand and twenty-five. Now, the difference for two thousand and twenty-three, um, would be sixty-seven thousand two-ten, and once we get to two thousand and twenty-five, the difference in those two, so we're only really investing another eighty thousand dollars by the, by the year twenty twenty-five between the two salary amounts. Uh, which in, in my mind personally is a pretty nominal investment, um, in our staff and in our structure compared to what we are looking at doing and, and I think where the park is gonna be headed. Uh, one of the other proposals would also be, you know, if, but yeah, let's, let's, we can just leave this on the table first and have a discussion.
I, I'm just gonna ma, make a comment here, um, you know, you guys are generating your own money, uh, you're not asking the county to supplement you, and as long as you all can fit it into your budgets and make it work, uh, to get the people you need, and you're not asking us for money, I'm good with it.
I concur.
Yeah, likewise, you, you, that's what your, your board does, if, that's what they wanna do, you're, you're self-funded?
Right.
I've had the opportunity to enjoy the services there, they do a phenomenal job.
Feel the same way now, at one time, I'm feeling.
Correct.
Is creating quality app. Five-year.
Correct.
Quality that we have.
And that's, that's really one of the main issues we're having right now, is it's just we're not attracting qualified candidates, and we haven't, we actually haven't promoted the, the position thoroughly in the past three weeks, waiting on this, this meeting so we can actually get it back out there. We're spending about six hundred bucks a month just on advertising the position.
I, I, I agree with the rest on the financial part of it, but I would caution you that I fish a lot of different places, and I would tell you Boggs Lakes is the most expensive place that I do go to fish.
Absolutely. It's while we can, it's while we can afford this salary increase.
That's what I would caution, I mean. Obviously.
If you buy a season pass, it's not nearly as bad.
No, right. I, I keep it affordable, that's all I'm saying.
I, I completely agree, so, you know, we actually reduced the cost, believe it or not, we haven't increased the gate fee at all, um, so we're still at six bucks, ten bucks per boat, which is ludicrous, don't get me wrong, I agree. Um, the states have increased theirs, um, to seven dollar entry fees, granted their boat fees aren't quite the expense. Whenever I came on, we were taxing our users so much that, so if you're camping for a week, we were charging you a ten dollar per day launch fee, which is ridiculous, so we actually reduced that, that once you actually are camping with us, it's a one-time launch fee for the longevity of your stay. We're looking at ways to reduce that, we haven't raised our rates much, what we did institute two years ago was a, a lake, or a lake enhancement fund, which was kind of a, an increase in camping, but it was across the board that we would actually use that money to put into a different account for water quality issues. Um, and on the topic of, of fishing and, and the lake, you know, I just, we are going through a lake diagnostic study right now, that was a grant through the, uh, Lake and River Enhancement Program through DNR, that's ongoing through the rest of the season. Um, you may or may not have phone calls recently about algae issues at the park, yes, we have it. Um, right now, we have a huge influx of duckweed, which is not an algae, it's non-toxic, but unfortunately, it's there. Um, and once it kinda mats together, cause it's all surface vegetation, once it masks together with the algae, it looks like one big algae mat. Um, we actually just had aquatic control, we have a couple of, uh, of real-time cloud-based so, sonar systems out there, kinda doing a lot of the, uh, the testing for us, uh, it, it was a trial phase last year, it worked very, very well compared to our actual tangible water samples, um, so we're keeping that thing going this year, we have two different, uh, devices out there, and they were out there checking it on Friday, and, and gave us kind of a quick scope of what was going on with the lake, which is good, actually it's not great, but at least they're, we're on top of it. Um, so, you know, speaking of the lake diagnostic study, once that is complete, we will look, be looking at different measures of how to mitigate the issue we have upstream, which is predominantly our eight thousand acre watershed. One of the things we've briefly discussed the past handful of years, and I've never had a chance to really initiate it, but I think it's gonna be imperative that we do, is a conservancy district, um, something that should have happened along with that lake in nineteen seventy-two, fifty years ago, and we opened, and what that would allow us to do, and that would be a long, another discussion that you guys will have with somebody else, um, and I'd happily come back or at least chime in a little bit on YouTube for it, um, but, um, that's gonna be our perpetual funding for not only the, the watershed itself, but we have a dam that has a fifty-year lifespan, and this is fifty years, so, we really need to be looking at what's gonna be coming ahead, um, and putting money back in a certain fund to, to, I guess, focus on those challenges we may or may not have.
Okay, any other questions?
Should've come here five years ago for this, right?
So is that number high enough where you're willing to stay?
It's still lower than what I'm making going elsewhere, so no.
So from, from the overall budget then, I mean, so if, if you look at your numbers here, you're looking at a sixty-seven thousand dollar increase in, in labor in two thousand and twenty-three compared to where, where it is, I guess, currently?
Right.
Or, or where it would potentially be in twenty-three, uh, if we, if we left everything alone. So, so if you increase, I mean, so you've got that built into the budget to where?
That's built in, and I, I know you're looking at Phil, but I can speak quickly on that, so we had our park board meeting last night, and we have our, our to-date revenue and our to-date expenditures, um, and year-in-year comparisons, and right now, I know last year we had about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar profit, even though we can't really say profit in this world, but we had a profit, um, so that will easily allow this to be, you know, dispersed into that, um, but it's also, I believe, one of those that we do continually increase slowly out there, I mean, especially after COVID, we have about a six to seven percent increase in revenue out there every year. Last year was a little bit different because we were receiving a lot of our grant reimbursements for the Lake and River and, or Lake and Land Water and Conservation Grant, um, that'll be over with at the end of this year, um, but if you, and, and we can email you those reports just so you can see them, but if you compare them, what you'll see is, if, if you take away the disbursements and the revenue from those grants, we're pretty well right in line with what we've been doing last year, with about a sixty thousand dollar decrease as of to date in expenditures. Um, so hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have a bit more of a, a longer profit margin or wider profit margin.
So, so again, this is just pure salary, so you've got other incentives and benefits on top of that?
Fringes on top of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you're, yeah, right, that's correct.
We calculated that as well.
Okay.
We, what we did as a board, we asked Jameson and Debbie to run a five-year projection, they've came back, uh, trying to be conservative on the income side and, uh, more aggressive on things that go up in the park. So, basically the income side, we were running about three and a half percent, uh, increase per year, and we were running about a seven percent increase, and the numbers all come out, so, we're comfortable, as a board, we're comfortable with what we're seeing. And again, you know, um, we, we would be willing to make adjustments, if something happens, you know, that is unforeseen, we can always adjust the budget and.
Well, your, your cash balances are strong, you've got a good board, we could beat this dead horse, I make a motion that, uh, that those raises go in effect? Whenever you need for them to go in effect?
We probably, well, I would like to do a salary modification for this year and go ahead and get it in place.
I'll make that motion, let's move on. I mean, you got strong balances, you're doing a good job, you're self-funded, it's not taxpayers' dollars.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion by Tony to approve the proposed, uh, salary increases, seconded by Darren. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Can you amend your motion to include the salary amendment because?
As Tony stated.
Okay.
Yep, I stated just what you said.
Yep. Phil, do we, do we have a capital fund out there, like, for capital, like, for the dam or something like that, what kind of?
That's what we're working on, yes, so that's why we started that lake enhancement fund, so we have a separate fund specifically for that.
Okay, that's what, that's.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
I would love to sit down with a couple of you guys sometime and talk more in-depth about, you know, the lake, I, I, I never understood when I got on the board why the park was responsible for the watershed, you know, basically, we're allowing all the sediment and all the nutrients to come down and pond in the lake, and then the park figure out what to do with it. It should, it should be set up as Little Prairie Creek is, where everybody that's in that drainage basin pays a small fee every year, and then that conservation fund pays for the things we're talking about. It's, it would be almost impossible for the park to be able to fund that long-term. I'm just, I've looked at it. It's not possible.
And even to mitigate the water quality issues, we don't have the budget for that. Even if we, even this lake enhancement fund that we have, we're just, we're looking at different ways to Band-Aid it until we get this, until we find other perpetual funding sources. And most others, just never, I came down from Park County, there was a conservancy district up there that was over 11 different watersheds. But it was a conservancy district. They taxed obviously the residents in that particular watershed and that money was allocated towards that dam, towards that, that structure. That would be the Little Raccoon Conservancy District up there.
The only, the only way to change the water quality is to start in the uplands.
Yeah.
It's that simple.
And I've had a lot of good conversations with some of the residents in the watershed about different tactics that they could start helping do, especially even the landowners around the lake. And that was one of the issues, you know, the lake was built for this particular reason, it's a catch basin. And that's what they are, that's why it was designed. But then we started developing around the lake and your buffers just kind of went away, especially when everyone has to have a nice manicured lawn with fertilizer. And then they can bitch about the algae even though they're contributing to it. So it's, it's one of those where I had a lot of good discussions with people out there about mitigating and their own lawns and what they can and can't apply to our property. But then what they can do to help, you know, in their own property, help us out. And I've had a lot of good conversations with some of the Amish farmers about what they can do on some of their properties, what we'd like to see them do to help out that would still benefit them as well. So hopefully, once we get this lake diagnostic study complete, we can, we can really look at those finite issues and come up with some resolve with be a shared cost with some of the landowners. And there's a lot of other good federal and state grants to go after some of that land mitigation issue too.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
And again, thank you.
You're welcome.
You well, wish you best. I, I know you've had a major impact on Wes Boggs in the last six years. And we truly, truly appreciate all you've done for Boggs.
It's been a ride. It's been fun.
Thank you.
One quick accounting item we need to do here. Patty, I'll let you explain.
So my question to the president or the vice president of council was, when would that pay raise go into effect? And also suggested that due to the appropriation paperwork needing to be done so that you would have adequate funds to do that, I would suggest that be in effect next month in August, so the appropriation can be there.
Oh, that makes sense. Even if we were not qualified candidates.
But for the rest of the line items that you have, there's quite a bit of work that goes with that. So we'll need some time to get the appropriations from, from the park paperwork. And then it'll go be advertising and go back before then for the official.
Out of the meeting.
Yes. So it would take effect after that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up, Gary, we've got your commissary funds. Yep.
I brought a big grab.
That's the, that's the fund that I have to show you twice a year.
Yep.
It's just state law that I be forwarded on.
It looks like we got good ending balances every month, so.
We're strong in it. I have a project that I want to do out of it, but we'll see. But it's, it's, it's strong.
Any questions about his report on that? Okay, we're going to move into the additional appropriations then.
Then I get to stay right here.
You stay right there. Your first one is the sheriff overtime report, $50,000.
Right.
What's going on?
Well, 10,000 of that is reimbursed from the federal government through DEA. So actually it's 40. We're just asking for 10. We've been hit pretty hard this year on overtime. If you really want to go back, 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 when I went to the academy, when Chuck went to the academy, JR went to the academy, we went Monday through Friday and we had to come home and work Saturday, right? So Chuck worked Saturday day, eight to four from Washington, so I had to work Saturday night, midnight to eight, right? Because that city thing, but we didn't get compensated for that. And it was just what we did, right? So over the years, we quit doing that. We quit making them work that. And then just getting coverage, nobody wants to work by themselves anymore and I can't blame them. Everybody wants off on a weekend. When I have someone take off on a weekend, I can't just not let the seat sit empty. I have to put somebody there and generally that's time and a half. It's kind of like GPC. Oh, you get a month's vacation, but you gotta work two months of overtime to, to cover everyone else that's off. Is kind of the position I'm in on the sheriff's office side. We had a class that several people went to. I had to pay them for training. As, as a matter of fact, apparently it's a problem throughout because in early January, I got a email from my attorney. Another county sheriff had asked, do we have to reimburse probationary officers overtime to drive to the academy? We never did, but he says we should be. So we started reimbursing the two guys that went. So that's eight hours for 16 weeks up there. We've had a CIT class. The only thing I do comp time with is our SRU unit. They're training. I just comp their training. So when they get called out, when they do something, I pay that. Comp time is a double-edged sword for me because you may pay the comp, but you still gotta pay somebody to be there. So that's why I really don't like comp time. Plus, the commissioners have an 80-hour limit on what they can have in comp time. Law enforcement is totally kind of exempt from that. We can get up to 480. But we maintain our guys to the 80 because we're like, if you walk out the door tomorrow, you're not going to get paid for that. And one of them's got like 200 hours of comp time. Boy never takes off. So that's kind of where it's at. I hope that gets us through the end of the year.
What percent of their pay is running overtime?
Pardon?
What percent of their salary is overtime?
Percentage?
Yeah, like how much are they earning? What's the average position earning in overtime a year?
Well, that's different because the dog handlers get an hour, a half hour every day to maintain the dog.
Or just talk about the deputies, I guess.
Every one of them's a little different, okay? We've had in the past, like Sturgis, JR, Chuck, and the three detectives, they'll cover a weekend, right? Whenever a road deputy takes off and they'll cover that. They still have to do their job during the week. So I, I don't know that I can, I don't know that I've ever broken it down by percentage.
Potentially, the payroll may be able to break that down with some reports. We can look into that and, and for both of you, that might be.
It's, it's a good, it's a good figure to, to monitor how excessive overtime is, which I don't know and you don't know, obviously.
Just like a month ago, 5:15, a crash came in and the guys that were working days didn't get done with it till 8:30 at night. But the guys that come out at six hit the ground running. You know, now if they don't hit the ground running, then go relieve the guys that's at the first wreck or even in the morning at shift change.
That, that stuff happens. I'm okay with, I'm okay with that. I would like to know what, what it is running. Any of anyone abusing it? That's the other thing.
Right.
Well, we can, we can potentially look at some reporting and see what capabilities are to maybe break that down into some kind of report. So you can see over time, we may be able to do it department or individual. We'll check and see what we can provide you on that and get back with both of you. How's that?
Yeah, I, I don't know how to do that.
You just have some way to measure or monitor it.
I don't know how to do that. We've never been asked to do that, so I'm not opposed to it at all.
Any other item you got is jail repair and maintenance, and I assume that part of that is your HVAC contract for the rest of the year?
Correct.
What's the rest? What is, what is the?
Pardon me?
What's the rest of it? Do you know?
Just to get us through to the end of the year.
Be roughly 5,000 more than what the contract for the HVAC.
Right.
Would be, so additional five.
Do we have anywhere else to take it from? Move, move stuff?
We've moved some stuff around in, in fuel and some different things. We've moved things other where, other places. Usually I will have an amount left over at the end of the year. And that's when I buy the LED lights or I buy the, the extra plumbing for the cells to reduce the water usage if I have left over. But if I don't, obviously, usually we do. This year's been a little bit more difficult on us than the side of things.
Okay, any other questions on this request? Got a motion by Mike to approve. We have a second. Second by Marilyn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same. Motion carries.
Thank you.
And you got some things coming up. September is a bad month.
Right.
You've got four things going on at the same time. There's no way you don't have overtime out in the wazir.
A lot of those, like the fair, the Davis County Fair, they'll pay like the events, but I'll pay overtime for the grounds. We've always kind of done that. Turkey Trot, they pay all of our people. So we, I don't turn any overtime in. They, they love having us there and, and so, but September is busy, busy.
Just being seen does a lot.
It does.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next up, we've got aviation, professional services and capital improvement, 65,000.
Hi, y'all.
Good morning.
I know I've been up here asking for money before for our professional services. This is from our engineering service that is overseeing our runway and taxiway expansion and improvements. And this is to cover money that not covered by FAA grants. It's, I wish I could come in here one time and say, I need this much throughout the year. I really just don't know how much that would be. So I come in and ask for a little of the time. And when this is all done and said and done, we won't be doing this anymore. The airport will be back to making money. But right now I'm asking for $50,000 to go into additional appropriations from the aviation fund into the professional services account to continue paying Woolport for the professional services that are not covered by the FAA grants. That's the first one I'm asking for.
Just re-appropriating money?
Yes, sir.
Question? Go ahead and do the second one so we can approve them together.
The second one, the $15,000, back a few months ago, we purchased some land off, 2.5 acres off of a farmer. They paid $50,000 for the land. It was to, so when we extend our runway, the taxiway is going to go down and connect to it. The capital improvement fund, or not capital improvement, I mean, the economic development paid for the property. They came back and when they did that, they, the farm owner, the farmer, the landowner, original landowner, lost an access road in the process. They agreed to replace that road. And since the airport didn't actually pay for the property, they asked us if we would pay for the gravel to redo that road. Now, originally there were some questions about, they were questions about security. Are you going to reopen the county road? No, we're not. And the highway department has agreed to put a gate at each end of it to let, so only the farmer can have access to that road. The FAA was concerned about it for security reasons with the new runway. And the, the money is, and the board finally agree, our aviation board of commissioners finally agreed, yeah, okay, we'll accept that. And the engineering firm, Woolport, said we'll accept that also and the FAA is good with it. And I want to put this $15,000 out of the aviation fund into the capital improvement fund. So the highway department can get the invoice for the gravel. They can send it to the auditor, bill it to this fund and they'll have the access to the money for it.
Yeah. So it's money they've already got. They just need to transfer it around so they can spend it in other areas.
Motion to approve the transfer.
Okay. A motion to approve by Tony. We have a second. We have a second. Tom?
I got it.
Tom seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have the county transition data processing equipment.
So this, Diana Snyder again, this is the community transition fund. Marilyn and I kind of talked about this the other day. This is a fund that we receive a daily stipend from the Department of Corrections to bring an offender back early from prison. The judge has to prove it. So when we put that person on our program, the state pays us 25 bucks a day to keep him on our program. So this is funds that we earn by doing that. The DOC just gives us the money. They don't need to appropriate it in any way, shape or form. The board agreed to these two expenditures here. We're looking at, we have about six filing cabinets. Marilyn sees them when she comes to our meetings, full of files from 1983 that we are going to try to digitize everything to get rid of some of that weight in that other building, get rid of some of the files, go electronic. So that is what this is for, is to purchase a good heavy-duty scanner for the part-time administrative assistant to start doing those things. And then a couple of our other scanners that we have on the desktops are ones that we got from prosecutor's office. And they're starting to wow. So these are some reasons we're wanting this appropriated. This was not originally appropriated. We usually only use the money to pay for our OT system that we have, a communication system between worker, lease and mates in my office. But we can use this funds as we see fit and the board approved this at the meeting in June.
And then also you have the traveling mile.
And the others, the travel. With COVID being over now and we had hired a new field officer during that time, Brett Powden, to come work for us part-time as our field officer. There's been several trainings offered this year that he needed to take with a place out of Lafayette that does a lot of state training. And so this will cover his expenses for the cost of the training and the mileage, hotel, all that, so.
Getting six cents a mile more now.
Have to tell him that when he goes to the one that he has next month. So that's what these two.
Any other questions?
I move that we approve these two additional appropriations.
Second.
A motion by Darren, seconded by Mike. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same. Motion carries.
Hour and a half later.
Now we've got E911, equipment, 60,000.
Well, I'll go ahead and say good afternoon since it's almost 11 now.
How could we miss dinner?
We are requesting an additional appropriation for $60,000 in the 911 fund, equipment fund. We had received a couple different invoices that weren't, they were invoiced from 2021 and we didn't receive them until this year. Unfortunately, I did not include those for you guys to look at. One of them was for radios that were purchased for the coroner's office. And then some other equipment for another department that was included in that. In our last, our last board meeting, the previous board meeting to that, we had discussed that there are still some potentially items that need to be purchased as we're getting, continuing getting the central dispatch up and running. Obviously, with a new operation, there's things that are coming up that we didn't plan for, didn't expect. Have, need additional equipment to make other things work better. For seeing those potential purchases that are coming to make sure that we're, you know, fully operating to our best of our abilities to our public safety.
Do you have an example of some of those things?
Currently, we have to add on switches for our. Currently we have to add on, which is for our phone system to work with our headsets that integrates our admin lines with our headsets. The manufacturer is having some issues with getting them to work properly with the phones that we have, which is the phones that the whole county has. So they're trying to, we have a, a model that they're tweaking to get to work best with that. We need to look at buying a couple spare portable radios for the radio room in case there was ever a reason that we would have to evacuate the building. We would still have contact with our units in the field to notify them, hey, dispatch, like, you know, is having to leave the building for whatever unknown reason. Those are just a couple of that. And then just any.
Are you ballparking this figure or what do you?
That's what, when we had our operations board meeting, that's what was discussed and decided by the board to bring it. That's what was initially put in the budget. Obviously some pre, like I said, the previous invoices having to be paid out of that. The board decided to just bring it back, you know, ask for that to pay for any additional cost of the central dispatch. And it's, it went through the, the E nine one one board.
Keep it in on that. Keep it in mind on that board is Sheriff Steve, you know, Eric. That's a really, really good board. And Julie's doing a good job. There's been a lot of hiccups. She's doing well. He's happy. Everybody's happy. It's, I'll make that motion.
Had some staff leave expected.
That wasn't very nice.
Yeah. And, and as I always said, once the new, they'll never know the way they did it before. Got a lot of headaches.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we got a motion by Tony, seconded by Tom to approve this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Juvenile probation user fee, six thousand dollars. Electronic marketing. Okay. Okay.
I know, I know. So I think that when Beth originally budgeted this last year, that was cut because we hadn't used it that much. But there have been some changes with the prosecutor's office and how they're handling juveniles. And I think that Southwest Regional Youth Village has had some staffing issues. So we're not able to send as many juveniles to Southwest. So the court, Judge Smith has been ordering them to electronic monitoring with probation to pay my department. We have like a MOU between each other that we only charge them the cost of the actual equipment. And so we've already used, used the money, billed the money that was originally appropriated for this account. So this is to hopefully get us through the end of the year. But that's up to how the juveniles behave. So she may come back again, but I know that's what this for because she said, Diana, I can't pay the bill unless you, unless we get this money appropriated, so.
And those that don't go on electronic monitoring, we're having to drive to Johnson County.
Yeah, because you can't take them to Vincent's anymore.
Yeah. It used to be Vincent's picked them up and brought them back and forth for us. But Johnson County.
Don't. And down by Clarksville.
Yeah, Clarksville.
Clark County.
We're having to do those and, and those are.
So we're saving them.
Those are trips, right?
Yeah.
Because we take them, we bring them back.
Back for court.
We take them back.
Yeah.
And take them, and I hate kids.
Yeah. We're going to work on that, Gary. Okay, I'd entertain a motion to.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, Marilyn made the motion to approve. We have second.
I'll second it.
Darren second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same. Motion carries.
How much overtime would you save?
Adult probation user fees. Yeah, it's a. Everybody understand the, the explanation on there?
Yep.
Got a motion by Mike Myers to approve. Do we have second?
Second.
Second by Tony. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry, I apologize to everybody for the length here.
Got to do what you got to do. At least I'm following you. Sometimes Matt moves a little too fast. Sorry, Matt.
I'll remember that for the next.
Okay, we got Wes Boggs on here. And they've all flew the coop. So everybody's had a chance to look at that. And any questions from anyone?
I will, I will tell you that I, I've just questioned, Jennifer and I were just talking about this. And I said, what's the park board salaries? I said, I want to make sure we understand that because there's not very much of a, of a reason on the paperwork that you have. So I did ask that. But that last year, their park board members are paid. And last year, their park board members were not paid appropriately. That was omitted. So that's the reason for this.
Okay.
It's not, it doesn't have anything to do with the salaries we talked about today.
Okay. Thanks for following up on that. Okay. I'd entertain a motion one way or another.
For all of them?
Yes.
I'll go ahead and move that we go ahead and pay the Wes Boggs park request for fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay. Do we have second?
Second.
Second by Marilyn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same. Motion carries. Next item, childhood blood level grant. And Kelly's waited an hour and a half to get back up here.
I'm a professional county government meeting. May I, may I respectfully ask for a redo from the emergency preparedness just an hour and a half ago? I, I went and made copies of, of what Darren was.
Oh, great. Oh, and I did want to, I did want to mention too, that the, the dates on that contract were not correct.
And I'm going to go over that.
So, okay.
Thank you. Kelly.
Okay. So the protocol is to submit to the commissioners the summary sheet. I submitted the summary sheet. With that was the request to grant to review the previous year's contract. And I also attached, attachment A, which is the specific deliverables that must be met by the contractor. Grant then updated the contract, sent it back to the commissioners for review yesterday. There were some errors on the contract. It's on the back and you'll see I've handwritten the corrections because you are correct, Mr. Holder. The date is wrong. It is July one twenty-two to June thirty of twenty-three. And I am the emergency preparedness contractor. I'm not a general services worker. And that will also be reflected in the duties there listed by the state. So that should answer all of your questions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. I understand completely. Right. Any, any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I had submitted an additional appropriate appropriation request. We, the health department was approved by the commissioners to make application for the lead level grant. In my explanation, you will see our legislature changed the threshold for blood lead level in children. It has to be reported. So every child by the age of one has a blood test. If their lead levels are elevated, they then have to come to the health department and they have to be administered services with our certified lead risk assessor. And we do have one individual in our department that does that. He then does risk assessments in the home. That does take some time. And then we monitor the child throughout through continued blood testing. So, so we can get that child below that threshold where they'll, that will mitigate from any future health issues. With the state lowering that threshold, they found that every county in Indiana will have an additional amount of cases. That's an unfunded mandate. Therefore, they sent every county based upon estimated additional cases, a pot of money. And I think I might have attached to that all the counties that were awarded money. We do have a significant amount of older homes pre nineteen seventy-two here in the city of Washington. So those funds are to go to pay the salary of the additional cases. That's why I'm here to request to be appropriated and the salary be amended only for that period of time ending in twenty-four, I believe. Yeah, July one to June thirty of twenty-four. We already have all the training necessary and the individuals prepared for the additional cases. Any questions? Thank you.
I move we approve these original, or initial appropriations for, I think a total of fifteen, about fifteen-five.
I have second.
Second.
Second. Motion by Darren to approve the request, seconded by Tom. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay. Yeah. Get up here, Diana. Transfers, community corrections.
Yes. This fourteen thousand, three hundred twenty-nine dollars is what's left out of these combination, these different things. But there's not enough money to pay those individual salaries anymore that are now coming out of what we talked about earlier, eleven twenty-two. So.
Just cleaning them up? Just cleaning them all up?
Cleaning them all up, except for the part-time physician, the part-time, there's still part-time money in there to pay for my part-time admin and my part-time field officer. So we're leaving those dollars in the part-time fee, continue to pay all the grant fund. But these will allow us to expand the rest of this money so that we don't leave it in the count at the end of the year. So that's why we're moving it around. And it's already been approved by the state and the board. I have to do one of these little forms every single time. So what you got, I had to do twice, so.
I, I did have a question on it. So I, you, you had mentioned in your write-ups.
Right.
On these that the, it's already been approved by the advisory board.
Correct.
So I don't, I don't quite understand.
Well, it's the appropriation to spend the money that you guys.
But who's, who's the advisory board?
We have it at Community Corrections Advisory Board, which Marilyn sits on, which consists of both judges, the prosecutor. Gary sits on that board as, as their positions. Mike Taylor now comes in our meetings. He's also part of the JRAC board, the chief probation officer, juvenile probation officer. We have, I was, the superintendent of Barrie Community Schools. We have Mindy Berry with DCS. We have a client, a former client.
So, so the, the point being, the board, does the board have funding approval authority?
The board by statute, by statute has the authority, controls the fund, this, the funds, how they are spent. And then the state, it's a double whammy Darren. It's really, it's all in statute, the way it's set up. But the board has to say yes. And then when the board, as you can see on this one form, I had to put on here that the board approved it and what date they approved it. And then they have to have the minutes that show that the board approved those transfers or expenditures. And then they send me back this and then I do the work that I do to you that I send to Patty's office to come to you guys.
And it, but so, and that's, but then we are the final.
You're the final.
Approval.
Step.
Okay.
To do the appropriation so that it can't actually be spent.
Basically, her board makes the recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, they don't have the authority to pad.
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
That was my point.
That's why it has to go through Patty.
Yes.
Okay.
It's like I jumped through hoops for all of it to get it, I'm doing it the right way.
It's called balance of powers.
There we go. There we go.
So I move that we approve these community correction transfers on grant ninety-two hundred for fourteen, three hundred twenty-nine.
Okay, we had a motion by Darren. We have second.
Second.
Second by Mike. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
What about the, what about those information technology, the consulting?
That's.
Huh? That's Dale. Okay.
We got Dale here. Your turn. Last one up has to buy dinner.
These transfers are from, you'll see separate, or a couple of different, I had one that was in, in the same category. Didn't have to come up for you. But over this year, I've did some different things with license renewals. For instance, we did a five-year on our Marocchi equipment that saved. One year, one year cost was eight thousand dollars or I could get five year for thirteen thousand. So I did that. Co-termed our Veeam license, which is our backed up software. So they all kind of end at the same time. And I went ahead and did that through twenty twenty-four. Community Corrections Office three sixty-five licensing come out by renewals budget this year. Form stack that we put in to be able to do some stuff online for, for some grants was four thousand. So I used a little more renewals budget than I expected. So these transfers are me looking at the other funds I have and thinking, probably not going to use that this year. So I'm transferring it in there to build that up before next meeting, you get the additional of what I need the rest of it. Because I did hear Tom ask a while ago, if you, if I, if it, if somebody had moved some money around. This is me moving the money around before you get to about eleven thousand dollars more in the next meeting. We should be good by the end of the year.
Dale's saying a few of our meetings.
Yeah. So basically you're actually spending more money now, but we're, the renewals will last longer.
Yes.
You're saying.
Yeah.
We're saving money in the end.
Yeah, like, I mean, just like for instance, for the Marocchi, if I'd have did five single years, it'd have been forty thousand dollars and I got it for thirteen.
There you go.
Say twenty-seven thousand dollars, but taking a little bigger chunk out now.
Make a motion not to approve. Your iPad's dead in ten minutes.
This will always, this will always be my biggest line item in the budget. It's going to be software renewals from.
Right.
Motion approved.
It just keeps going up.
Okay, we got a motion by Tony to approve, seconded by Marilyn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Dale.
Okay.
This is all just.
Yeah, we've got some information here. Different agencies. I apologize for the meeting running extremely long, but anybody from the floor got anything? Okay, Tony?
I do.
Tony has something.
Matt, this is supposed to be Matt. Matt wanted to be here. Would you like to come up? It's hard to put into words how much I've leaned on these people in the last four years. And to the point of coming in and just copies, budgets, what's this, what's this, what's this? So learning has been at their expense. But at any rate, before we take a picture, apply, presented a patty ball, Davis County, Indiana, in honor of your many years of dedicated service from two thousand nine to two thousand twenty-two.
It's been an honor to have served Davis County and it's been an honor to work with so many dedicated public servants. And Tony mentioned, you know, our office, we work with so many of everyone in the county. But the leadership, the boards, I've seen such advancement at the education level. It's so key. You guys are so engaged and it's so good to see. And our taxpayers should be very appreciative of the jobs that you're.
Thank you, Patty.
Okay, let's, if there's nothing else, let's adjourn the meeting and then we can take some pictures. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Tom, do we have second?
Second.
Darren, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, Matt.
Who's going to take this?